We're going to start the meeting. I'm going to call it to order. And we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And I hope you can hear us as we go forward.
Perfect. If I lose you, I'll just call back and mute myself.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If everyone will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I apologize that we're a little late, but one of our goals that we set at the retreat was to do tours. And so Mr. Harrington was kind enough to take us on a tour. And as you noticed, the building's a little big. And it took us a couple of minutes to go up and down all the stairs. So thank you for waiting for us. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. A motion would be in order to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Discussion?
I have a question about policy H4. In the resource Google Drive, it says that we're rescinding it. And on the agenda, it says first read. So I was just making sure that it's supposed to say rescind instead of first read.
For H4?
Yes.
It's E on here?
Are you talking about the?
Oh, I think that was in the note. Are you talking about in the?
No.
In the note?
No. It says rescind on the document.
On the document, it says rescind.
Oh, okay.
That's probably, I think that's an error.
It's not supposed to be rescind? Or it's an error on the agenda?
It's an error on the?
The document.
On the document?
I think it's an error on the document. I'm trying to think back because that particular policy.
Yeah, we doubt we were rescinding it since it refers to filming.
Well, I don't know if it was because of something. If there's a different policy that is, I don't know.
See, if I have my policy notes with me, I don't think I.
All right. Why don't we just wait?
Push it to next month?
Well, no, I mean.
Well, we'll just do a first read on it. If we, if it ends up being rescinded, then it ends up being rescinded. If there's something from the policy meeting, it's not. Doing a first read isn't going to hurt anything.
I'm trying to recall if it's an error on.
It's been a little hectic at Central Office. So with moving and there's some.
Well, there's a lot of stuff moving with policies.
Yeah. So when we get to policy, we can look over what the V S B A sent and all that. So, all right. So we'll just leave it on. If next meeting it needs to go, then we'll address it then. Is that okay?
Sounds good.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. General public comment?
Shall I come and sit at the table?
Sure. Can you share your name with us?
Yes. Laura Derrick Jar.
Laura? Oh, okay. Okay. And can you tell us what we're speaking to?
Yes, thank you. I am coming here to discuss and share with you. I have some research to hand out. A proposal to have a phone-free, social media-free full day for the children to fundamentally give them back an experience without these harmful distractions. And I'll just start by saying my background. I'm a, I'm a public health nurse. So my orientation is to look at what I describe as peer-reviewed, independent, independent with the clause being not commercially industry, not commercial industry-funded research. So research that does not have the bias of a for-profit industry funding it that would possibly produce bias in the results. So when I look at research, when I read documents, I do vet to see who has funded it, to really make sure that there isn't bias that could alter what the recommendations are when data is analyzed. So what I want to share with you, I'll, can I just pass stuff around? I have multiple copies. So there are four copies of this graph that. You know, we keep talking about in the media, the youth mental health crisis. That, that's been established. The Academy of Pediatrics, multiple groups, American Psychological Association, all the way to most recently, our Surgeon General has produced an advisory, both on the youth mental health crisis. And then in May, he made an advisory specifically saying that the social media products have been established to not be sufficiently safe for children to use. So he made those comments. When we look at this graph, the introduction into the commercial market of social media, mobile phones corresponds exactly with when we see an increased trend in youth suicide rates. Now, this is not just one dataset. This comes from the C B C. This comes from the N I H. This comes from our Poison Control Center because they do a very good job of keeping track of data. So children with intentional poisonings, all of those trends, emergency room admissions for mental health crisis, controlling out for bipolar and schizophrenia, but specifically the mental health crisis of anxiety, depression, self-harm, suicide attempts. All of that, those trends across all of the data start around the time when these products were introduced into the market. So one of the authors that I'm sharing with you today, along with, there's enough for everybody, Dr. John Height, along with Dr. Jean Twenge. These are both psychologists that are very deep researchers. And I can say, I'll qualify this, very conservative. They, they would only make a recommendation, which is the title of this article, the proposal, to make schools, phone-free schools, really if they have sufficient data to be able to make such a recommendation. So they, for years, have been studying this trend. What could have possibly caused it? These are independent researchers who are not funded by industry. And I do put that qualification there because industries such as Google, Microsoft, Facebook, they have hired scientists to counter this research and to say, well, correlation doesn't mean causation. And there could be so many other factors that are contributing to it, not just social media. These researchers, Dr. Height and Dr. Twenge, controlled out for other factors, war, environmental crisis, economic crisis. They controlled for what are other things that could be contributing to this, this crisis in youth mental health? And they intend that it is the introduction of these products into the market. And again, that agrees with the research that we see across the board. When children interact with these devices, overall, there is harm caused. So I think the only other thing I do want to share, I only have two copies of these, but they are significant, is that when we are talking about the harms caused by these products, they are not just sort of reported in survey or even by the evidence that we see of these increased emergency room admissions and increase in self-harm. We now have across the age span of children, from young children, which is the research article I'm passing around, through adolescents, M R I brain scan research that has been done at the National Institutes of Health on a large cohort of children, 11,000 children sampled across the country. This, this study started in 2018. That's actually showing us on the brain pictures that they take with the M R Is, there are physical brain changes that are happening to children as well. And so the article that I'm sharing with you is by Dr. Hutton. He's out of the University of Cincinnati. He is seeing this as early as the preschool-aged children. That more screen time, when he looked, and this was the article he just published in November of last year, this really, these children that young are showing changes in their brains. And they're not reassuring changes. If you would like, I can share with you later. He actually just was interviewed by another nurse last week to explain, for those of us who are not neuroscientists and brain experts, to explain in terms that we can understand what the practical implications are of that for the child. The other research that I just want to share with you, and again, I do have copies for everybody, so you can just take one and pass one, is that in addition to the John Height article I passed out, I didn't print everything because this, there's a semester worth of reading here. I'm trying to just have you see and review the highlights. Something else that was significant was that cyberbullying in and of itself has now been documented in the research. This was published in the Journal of the American Medical Association as an independent variable in and of itself, aside from other, other risk factors. So the study, as I controlled for other risk factors for suicide and did find that cyberbullying, even when none of the other risk factors are present, counts as a statistically significant risk factor for child suicidality. The other interesting and significant read that I want to share with you, it's number five on this reference list, is there's a mother, her name is Kristin Bride. She lost her son at the age of 16 as a direct result of cyberbullying. And the link is to the testimony she gave in February of this year to the U.S. Senate Commerce Committee explaining this problem from a perspective of a survivor mother. And significantly, I usually do print this, the last three pages of her testimony, she shares stories of other families that unfortunately have lost their children. So we have the data, we have the trends, and then we do have the human stories, which really have to be shared. The other very significant piece of research, what was just published this year, number six, comes out of that cohort of over 11,000 children. And this is a longitudinal study. So as opposed to a cross-sectional study, the longitudinal study has more power and more weight. They were following children over time and saw that children as young as nine to 11 years old, with this additional product exposure, had increased suicidal behavior associated with their product use, product exposure. So that's just to lay out a little bit deeper the research supporting why. So why would we move and why am I here to discuss the possibility of discussing a policy to support a school day that has no phones and no social media during the school day? So we've, the research has established that this is a product that's overall harmful for children. Eight hours of the day without these projects can do wonderful things to give these kids a break, to give their brains a chance to rest. So neuroscientists will talk to us about just fundamentally this overstimulates because it's just a child's brain. So eight hours of the day without that is a protective factor. It's also, as teachers will tell you, I've been talking to teachers, I've been talking to school counselors. It will also bring more focus in class. There's not that distraction of somebody sneaking it under the table. I talked to one of our high school principals who shared that kids text each other during class to meet up in the bathroom, that during lunch, for example, children are not talking anymore because they're on their phones. Same with during the transition times. So this policy is, goes beyond simply saying we're not going to use these during classroom time. This is, it will not be on the person. It will not be used off for the entire day. Because I work with some moms, really across the country, but there are two moms in Philadelphia I work with. One of them is counselor herself, but both of them had to send their children to the emergency room for suicidality. And they took the phones and social media away from their teens because that was sort of the recommendation that they saw this was truly the trigger for that happening. But when they go back to school, it's like their children are just swimming with the sharks. And even at lunch, they are the only children at lunch without a phone out. And it's a very isolating experience for them. So the idea is that this type of policy actually can have a very positive framing and beneficial language to it, as opposed to it being language of making people feel like we're taking anything away. We're really giving children back their school day. We're giving them back the experience, even in adolescence, of really what can happen in a school day when people have the opportunity to buy content and talk and spend time with each other. So I can tell you so far that the Vermont School Counselor Association is supportive of this. I have talked to some psychiatrists at the University of Vermont who are also in support of this. We have senators in legislature who are supportive of this. But what really needs to happen, policies like these have already started in place in other states, in Massachusetts, Boston Public Schools, Akron, Ohio, Connecticut, New Hampshire. But in Vermont, people are going to want to see who's doing this in Vermont. So I know Newark School, up in the Northeast Kingdom, they are, only go through middle school, but, so they do at least have the middle school. That principal does have an explicit policy in place. If the child arrives at school with a phone, he has a shoe rack in between his office and his administrator's office. So the phone gets turned off and lives in the shoe rack for the day. And even if that child stays for after-school activities, the child doesn't access the phone during that entire day. And then when they leave campus, they get the phone back.
So can I just ask a clarifying question? You're asking for this to be every day. You said to support a no-phone and social media day, but you're.
School day, every day, yes.
Okay.
For the whole school year. Yeah. So it would just be one day a week. It's the day.
And what are their parents' responsibility at the end of the day? Because it seems like you are placing a lot of the responsibility on the schools, on the teachers. And currently, what we do do in our schools, because this is the world that our students live in and are growing up in with technology and social media, whether we love it or not as parents, it's try. We have courses in place to teach them how to be responsible, how, and now the name of the course fails.
Digital citizenship.
Digital citizenship. There you go. Because once they leave our buildings, I mean, they're going to be in the world in college and workplaces where, you know, there are some where phones are going to be part of your everyday life, right? So I'm just wondering what the responsibility is for parents at the end of the day? Because you seem to talk a lot about our responsibilities here within the school.
So from sort of a policy tool or intervention perspective, schools have such a gigantic microphone for the community. What a school endorses or doesn't endorse is communities are going to take their cues from. So when parents see schools are going to stop endorsing these products, that's going to send a message back to the community. It's chicken or egg, but I think this is a way. No school has yet adopted a policy that says we're a phone-free school and said, we wish we didn't do that. It's really improved the school day experience for the children. So indeed, this is out there. But we also know, again, through swathes of research, that yes, there are courses and we can prepare children, but the addictive nature of the design of these programs is too much for their brains during adolescence. There has been a movement until now that was called the Wait Until Eighth Movement. You know, wait until your child is 13 or 14 until you give them a phone. That was not a policy that was decided because of science or research saying that age 13 or 14 was an appropriate age to give these products to a child. The background actually for where that policy came from and why social media platforms right now have an age 13 age limit is that in the 1990s, there was a law passed called the children, federal law passed called the Children's Online Privacy Protection Act, COPA. So the authors of that bill, I believe our former Senator Lou Leakey was one of the first authors of that. It was to, the effort was to protect children's privacy and prevent too much data collection on children of this, because that is the business model behind a lot of these products. They originally wrote the legislation to ask for age 18. Industry lobby, which we know is very prevalent in Washington, came and pushed and pushed and pushed and pushed it down to age 13. Right now, in the Senate, Department of Commerce, they are trying to have what they call COPA 2.0. So this next version of COPA. Because the 1990s, the internet was very different than it is today in terms of the business model of data collection of children. So they are trying to update the bill despite a lot of industry pressure to bring that age back up to 18. So that is currently on the floor of the Senate right now. It just actually passed out of committee last week along with the Children's Online Safety Act, which a lot of the survivor mothers are trying to put in place. The Kids, Kids Online Safety Act is an act to try and make the internet safer, to have less exposure to the harms of pornography, access to fentanyl, trafficking, bullying, harmful content. And actually, I can leave you with this list, which I'm really glad you asked that question. So this is really a catalog of the harms. It was produced by a lot of the mothers that have lost their children. It's extensively, and it has research citations to go with every sort of one of these harms, from cyberbullying to the access to drugs. It goes through all of these harms. And what's really unfair is that, so Kristin Bride's son, Joanne Bogard is another mom. She lost her son, he was 14 or 15, Mason. And he was on YouTube. He was not even like a cell phone kid. He was just on YouTube and came across one of the online challenges, the choking challenge, and he died. They originally thought it was suicide because it was asphyxiation. But when they did the forensic review of his telephone, they found that it was an online challenge. And with a lot of children as young as 12 with the online harms, that's what they've been finding. So the internet right now doesn't have any safeguards in place to prevent children from being able to access this content. There's always a way to circumvent with keywords and find the content. And on top of that, even some children, like there's a mother with a national group that I advocate with who lost her 16-year-old son last September. She lost him to suicide. And the past two weeks before his death, he had only been looking for positive content because they did a review of what he had been searching on his phone. He had been looking for healing and positive affirmation terms. And it was on the TikTok platform. And the harmful content explicitly for how to end his life had been sent and directed to him. Even the fact that he was, he was trying to put in positive content. So what's really unfair is that a lot of these moms, and I know them, did everything to educate their kids. They were on top of it. They followed the rules. They said to their kids, don't post anything online that you wouldn't want, you know, up on the billboard of the highway. They, they really did everything. And at this point in time, the internet, for kids to just have free rein with the social media products, really just isn't, isn't safe enough. It doesn't have any of the seatbelts in place. So the Kids Online Safety Act that Senator Welch did sign onto, Bernie Sanders has yet to sign onto it, that is an effort to try and address that. But even if it gets passed, it's not going to be in effect until maybe later next year. So the concept of protecting the school day and giving these kids a break from this, at least for while they're in school, helps school. It helps minimize behavioral problems, fights between children. Really only benefits come from it when you talk to schools and people who are in environments that have put this in place. In terms of the actual implementation, I brought again, one cup, one copy of a, of two different schools that are in Massachusetts, of what does the policy look like? So there are various ways to implement this. And Jonathan Height, you know, spells it out that again, having the phone in the backpack turned off isn't enough. And high school teachers here I've talked to will say that. I cannot compete with the digital drug of social media. So high school teachers right now have told me they have to just physically confiscate the phone from kids, have it during class, and then give it back to the child. And that puts that teacher in a very awkward situation because it's, it's, some teachers allow it, some don't. And so it supports the teachers more if there's one consistent policy. The, so the policy that Dr. Height recommends in the, in the article that I sent around really says, or there's a phone locker. So something like that, shoe bag, or an actual locker that, that closes with a lock. Or there is a product, and I, I'll tell you now, I should have said this at the beginning. I, I'm, I'm a stay-at-home mom. Nobody pays me or, or funds me to share any of this research. I am just concerned as, as a nurse about this problem. But there's a spectrum of how to implement this. There can be that practically free, absolutely no cost shoe bag over the door or, or shelf in the administrator's office. And if the school is small enough and wants to do that, that's where it goes. And that's where the phone lives. For schools that are larger or want more support in implementing it, on the other end of the spectrum, there is something called a yonder pouch. And I just printed from their website the brochure of what it is. It's a pouch where, it was originally designed for concerts, music concerts. Chris Rock was one of the very first adopters of this because too many people were taking pictures on the phone while these artists were performing. And so the pouch was designed for concertgoers to basically turn off their phone, put the pouch, put the phone in the pouch. And then there's a magnetic lock. So really at the entrance of the school or in other sort of specific supervised locations, so the lock, the phone goes in there, it's locked. So it does stay in the backpack. That way, the principal or the admin office doesn't have to worry about keeping track of different people's lockers fine. So it is still in their backpack, but it's turned off and it's not accessible during the day. And then when they leave school, they go to whatever location this unlocking mechanism is. It's usually the entrance and the exit of the school. And they are unable then to unlock it and get their phone out and use it. And so, well, again, I'm not promoting that anybody should have to pay for a policy like this because it can be just free. For the schools that need the support, they have staff that will come to a school, give a presentation, do the parental education, support the teachers, and stay there. And they even expect attrition in the bags. They know that some kids are so addicted that they're going to vandalize the bag because if you really do have to just cut it open, it can be broken open. So they do replace the bags because they know that's going to happen. And in some of the roughest schools and most challenging schools in, in Boston, that happened. You know, with 900 students, the first couple of days, 100 bags needed to be replaced. And they just understood that. As, as the children's brains who are used to swiping, swiping, swiping all day long, calm down and re-regulate, then after one week or so, this just becomes the norm that the phones aren't accessible during the school day. So this is just to share that, that there is a spectrum. Rutland Middle School, before COVID, was starting this program. And then, you know, COVID sort of upended everything with everything. So that didn't happen, but they were about to adopt it. And there's a school, like I said, there's, there's a long list. But Akron, Ohio, I spoke to their superintendent about a month ago. And they did, they, they learned about this program. So they went ahead and just trialed it with a few schools in the spring for just three or four months. And they had so much success, they surveyed their teachers about improved behavior, so many different benefits, that they are just, for the entirety of Akron, Ohio, Public School District, K through 12, going to have this policy in place starting September. So that's just to present you.
Okay.
With a spectrum of options.
Great. Thank you. So we will take this under advisement and we will discuss it. And we will see if we're, choose to send it to policy. Did anybody have any questions, comments?
I just wanted to add that Rutland Town School does have a policy like this for the middle school, and it has made a big difference in their learning and behavior to this process of improvement in their behavior.
Yeah. Thank you for, you've done a wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Very nicely done.
And just to share, and I'll. Is that the three principals with the school counselor I spoke to have expressed support, I mean, that they would like to do this, but they did want support from the policy committee or from the, from the school board and the superintendents to be able to implement it. So I think from the people that I've talked to and some of the teachers, there's sort of a positive attitude towards moving forward with this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
One more. Thank you.
Moving on. Next is the approval of the July 5th minutes. A motion would be in order to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion?
I have one on it. I'm just curious. I, a lot of times when I read minutes for meetings.
Yep.
When there's a nay vote, there is, like, the person that voted nay is listed just so that there's a record. I don't know if that's absolutely necessary or just subject to choice.
The person who votes nay can request to have their name included in the minutes. The only one I can think of was Mike voted no. He didn't request to have his name.
So you have to request?
Yes, generally, it's just recorded yea or nay.
I was just curious.
Yeah. So if someone wants their name recorded as the nay vote, usually at the table, they say, I'd like it recorded that I voted no.
My understanding is that. And I think it can be interpreted different ways, but the minutes. But the minutes don't have to reflect who said no. But if there's an abstention, then that should be reflected in the minutes. So I think it just comes down to, you know, how the board wants the minutes to, you know, be reflected.
At Corey Valley, I mean, that's, these are, I did the minutes because Shana obviously was. But if someone has wanted their vote recorded as a nay, we have someone who votes no sometimes on the budget. He historically wants his name recorded as a no, that he voted against the budget, and will say so in the meeting. So it makes no difference to me. I'm just kind of following past practice and I don't.
I was just, I was just curious. I wasn't sure if that was something that should be reported or it just doesn't matter.
I mean, I think the important part is that the vote is recorded. That's what the open meeting law says, is that the vote is to be recorded. So. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Warrants, receive your warrants via your GRCSU email. And questions should be directed to Louis. A motion would be in order for the approval of warrants. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The superintendent's report is in here for information. And the assistant superintendent will provide her report.
Well, I'm sorry, this is a late addition to the drive. I gave out some copies of it, but if anybody needs one, feel free to grab them. So really just, you know, busy summer, trying to wrap up last year, get ready for next year. And we've got movement in all areas of our work. So just a couple highlights. We have the first round of VITCAP data. That's the new Vermont Conference of Assessment Program data coming out later this month. And the state will be doing a training webinar for district staff in two weeks. And they'll show us what that might look like and what it might include. And then there was also a memo we received that said that there should be some additional resources coming out in terms of some of like the interim assessments and the other kinds of tools, similar formats of tools that we were used to having access to with the Sback platform. We don't have any information yet on a timeline or specific details about that. But we're hopeful that we'll be able to get some good resources into the hands of our teachers and principals this year to support continued administration of that assessment. Getting ready for in-service new teacher orientation. And had a great admin retreat with the principals and central office staff. It's always really nice to be able to reconnect with folks during the summer and have a little more luxury of time to delve more deeply into some of those topics and work that we want to advance and move forward on behalf of the district. We also have a few things being updated this summer. Our multi-tiered systems of support, our MTSS guide is being updated. And our math department, high school math department, has done some work in their PLC on their priority indicators and realigning some of the courses to have better consistency across our schools. And one of the teachers took on the work this summer of finalizing that on behalf of the department. And also the financial literacy standards were updated by the state. So that same teacher is going to update those on behalf of the department as well. And then they'll review that with their PLC in the fall. So that was exciting for me always because it came from the teachers. And when they come to us and they say that there's some important work that they'd like to do on their curriculum and they have a collaborative plan to do that, I always really appreciate their time and effort and the thought that went into that work. So kudos to them. And otherwise, if there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
So the state updated the literacy standards?
Financial literacy.
Financial literacy. When did they do that? Recently?
Last year.
Last year, okay.
They're still the same, you know, the jump rope framework, which is the National Financial Literacy Framework with some Vermont adaptation to it. They just made some tweaks based on a couple of years of implementation and learning from that.
All right, any other questions?
What is SWP?
School-wide program.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's our Title I funds. We have two choices in how we implement them. We can do it as a school-wide program, in which case the funds are available for all students in the school. Or we can do it as a targeted assistance program. And that means that the funds have to be used for students who would qualify for a free or reduced lunch. And we, and so they, those are the only students that can access the resources that come from the grant. And we have to track the data on their performance separately from that of their peers. So all of our schools who are eligible for Title I are school-wide programs currently in the GRCSU as it allows us the flexibility to just use those resources and help whatever kids need them.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to contract recommendations. For professional staff, we have Alina Weehoff as Corey Valley Secondary Math Interventionist, rate to be determined for a one-year contract, which is grant-funded. And Jessica Chase for the Wellness Center for SEL Behavioral Coach at $48,259. The Wellness Center is what we're referring to as the program in Pulteney. And for support staff, Shannon Perry, Proctor High Para, Cynthia Van Den, Proctor Elementary Para, Janique Crawford, Wells Village Para, and Grace Hayes Wellness Center Para. The other three are to be determined. Grace Hayes, $16.19. Any questions? Or a motion would be in order to approve the contract recommendations as presented.
So moved.
Discussion.
The rate to be determined, do you know?
I'm guessing that they, just because where we are with people being out, that contracts haven't been written up yet, so.
Yeah, Chris is out, Louis is out.
Gotcha, okay.
So I'm thinking in the next week or so. So we can ask them to provide this for our information at the September meeting if you'd like, just so you can see what the rates are.
Yeah, those are also all positions that would be CPA rates as well. So they'd be collective bargaining rates.
That's what, that was, that was my next question. I was just going to say, I think it's under the support staff agreement, so.
Right.
No, I wouldn't, I don't need an update.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Resignation, we have one. Corey Smith, GRCSU Curriculum Coordinator, resigning from this offered position to accept the Wells Springs Unified Union School District Principal Position for FY24. A motion would be in order to accept the resignation. This is by Eric. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Are you re, are we putting it back out there? I did not to do that after some lengthy conversation, just trying to, it's an ESR-funded position, so the funds will be gone at the end of the school year. And trying to get someone up to speed at this point, by the time we, from outside of our supervisory union, by the time we got them up to speed, the year would be over. And we just didn't feel like the impact would be profound. And we want to use those funds to really make impact for kids. So we're going to look at other opportunities to do that.
All right, moving on to finance. So Louis is included in the packet.
Do we do open positions?
Oh, well, open positions is informational.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't even know if that's in the packet this time.
Yeah, it is, but thank you.
So the financial year-end, Louis has provided the number at the top. The numbers at the bottom for special ed have already been, as you see, those refunds have already been sent back to the districts. And so at the beginning, what he's, he's estimating about $100,000 of surplus. And he would like to set aside $50,835.17 for FY24, for moving furniture and technology-related expenses for the new GRCSU offices.
That's out of 150.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I skipped down too far, yeah.
I thought there was funding for the moving part of it. They said that they had additional funding for moving. And so this is for furniture and technology? Or I've just, I don't know. I got some questions regarding this and with Louis not here, it's.
Well, it's a decision we need to make because we're on the move, so to speak. By the next week.
My thought would be that if, you know, if there was, he would like to set aside $50,000 for all this.
Yeah.
And so is that going to all be used? Like, is it, has it been, is like, all that already been like, kind of like allocated for the move and the expense? I mean.
He has a general idea. They're going to, they want to purchase, obviously, they want to purchase new tables, chairs. They're purchasing new equipment. They're purchasing like whatever the technology is going to be, the board or whatever, all of that to put into the conference room. There's going to be some new computers, you know, just all of those things that as you move, some of the things we're moving are old. And rather than moving them and setting up on the technology side, Greg has decided that it would be more advantageous to go through everything and start new, so.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want to like have, throw a bunch of money at it. Kind of like a blank check type situation where there's, you know, because this is, this is assessment money that could come back to like Wells Springs, for example, is what I'm getting at, so.
Right, so the remaining money you would be getting back is right above that.
Yeah, no, I see that. But, you know, I just want to know, and again, with them not being here, is all that money going to use, does it have specific purpose? Or is it just like a ballpark figure that he just come up with and then, you know what I mean?
Well, what is, whatever isn't used is going to go back into the account. And if there's $12,000 left or whatever, then that will have to, using the same assessment percentages, let's say there's $12,000 left over from the $50,000, okay? They would have to use, he would have to use, those are the assessment percentages, right? No matter what, no matter how much money is left, because it's based on student population, that money would have to be divided up that way and sent back to member districts. It's not like if there's money left, the money can just sit at the SU. The money has to be used.
This is, so this is FY23 money, right?
Right, the books just closed out. Yeah, so this is the money from last year.
So if all of it's not used, does it just get refunded? Or does it go into FY24?
So if it, if the $50,000, whatever isn't used out of the $50,000, that would be refunded to the member districts. So if they only, if they only use $38,000 for the move, whatever's left, because it's surplus money, would be, would be sent back to the member districts, just like the other money is being sent back.
Just wanted to know, I mean, it's, it might be, you know, a couple hundred or it might be a couple thousand dollars, but still, it's.
So are they moving anything from the old office besides records?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We're moving, our plan is to move almost everything. But there are, you know, a lot of our furniture there is kind of like state surplus or hand-me-downs from somewhere else. There are some items that we're not really confident are going to actually make the move and still be in one piece.
So are you also using the state site? There's a office furniture, like warehouse for state furniture that you guys.
That's where a lot of our furniture has come from over the years or like hand-me-downs from schools when they don't need them anymore. But there are several, several pieces that are, they're like already falling apart. And we don't think they're going to come out of the truck on the other end in one piece.
I mean, you'll look at the tables we have in the conference room or where we meet. They're not even as nice as these tables. I mean, it's just whatever somebody didn't want in the school. And you've got a plastic table, a wooden table, a four-foot table, a six-foot table, so.
Wobbly, wobbly leg.
Yeah.
Catch, catch your clothes on the edge of the table. Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and you know, there's like, you know, dumpster and shredder. And like, we've had to get some extra shredding bins and things because we didn't, we didn't hire out a company to come do that. So we've added extra bins to the office so our staff can go through and do that. And like, just some expenses like that, that they just, they add up a little bit, but they're.
The other piece is going to be security, cameras and all that. All that needs, is going to be upgraded and new. We're not moving what we have there. So all those pieces are going to be new too.
And that, to me, is like the most important piece of it.
Yeah.
Is upgrading that.
And Greg has come over and looked, when I spoke to Louis this past week about, you know, they've decided to put some more cameras outside and like that. So that, that's some changes from when we were first there. So, I mean, you'll, we'll certainly can ask for a detailed report if you want that, you know, an itemized report, is that something you would like? Okay. So a motion would be in order to allow them to use $50,835.17 to, for the F24, for F24 to help fund the moving furniture and technology-related expenses.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, and I'll make a note and let Louis know that as funds are, I mean, are we happy just getting one report at the end after the?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And then, you know, with that motion, the rest of it, of the assessment will just be refunded, as we usually do, right?
Right. Right, and that's why it's broken out like that? All right. So we, I don't, do you have anything else to add, Lisa, and under old business for SU relocation?
No.
Okay. The hope is that next month we'll be over there. So that's the goal.
We'll unpack quickly.
Yeah. Everybody will be energized from their vacations. Board work, one of the things we did today at the beginning of the meeting, as we had spoken about at the retreat, was to take a tour of the building. Joe Harrington, Assistant Principal of West Rutland, was here. And was kind enough to take us on a tour and kind of, you know, give us a history lesson about West Rutland School and their student population. I think next month, if we can be at the new central office, it would be good just to be there. And then we could create a calendar from there if we want to go to Rutland Town, if we want to go to Wells, where we want to go. So those schools could be prepared and have it set up so we could have a hybrid option for people if we are going to be at these other locations. And also that principals don't have something going on. So September's pretty busy, so it just seems. So, it just seems like maybe starting in October might be a easier option. And maybe we could do Middletown and Wells at the same time? Are they too far apart to do that?
It's like twenty-five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean-
I mean, could we meet at like, just on the option, we decided to do, have the meeting at one, could we meet at one, do a tour? Like, at five-thirty and then go to the other school and do a tour, or?
I, I mean, I, you know, if, if we're gonna do, kinda like, 'cause with all the schools in the whole SU, we could just like do a rotation type thing where, you know-
Do you meet at both schools, or do you just meet at one school?
We alternate.
Okay. All right. So, all right. So, let's, let's try to create that calendar in September of how we could kind of move. Because once we get to, I mean, November, December, people aren't gonna probably wanna really travel. And if the hybrid option exists, and also we'll be deep in budgets too. So, okay. The other piece for board work also should be in the pocket, and that was the principal report. And it's kinda, when I spoke to Chris, it's principal superintendent, assistant superintendent. It's about having some level of continuity across the SU for reporting. It was something that he had suggested, is something they talked about at superintendent's retreat. It was something they talked about even at one of the board chair roundtables. So, this was something that we had done, well, prior to merger, 'cause it was when Adam was here. And this, this was just kind of the template. And then, so everybody's report, when they came, looked the same. So, it's just, just a thought. And Chris just wanted to, we put it out there. If you want to discuss it further at the September meeting, if people have any comments about it, thoughts. If you hate it, we don't have to put it on the agenda for the September meeting.
One thought I had about it, and one that I've talked to Chris about for our principal is, I, she pretty much covers all these every meeting, but there's one, one thing that I would really like to start being consistent in that. Talking about what's challenging right now, or where they need more help. So, like, it's great to hear what's going well and what's been done, but also, you know, where they're struggling. Or I think it's good to, to have them question that every month, because things don't blindside us as much.
Sure.
And it doesn't, you know, it doesn't kind of keep going on for months and months and months. If they know something's, you know, a little hard right now, bringing it up so we can talk about what, you know, what can the board do to support them, I think would be really helpful.
Okay. So, adding that to this kind of group, okay?
I, I was gonna say something similar in regards to, you know, I think when we see these reports and, and you hear about, you know, a lot of positive stuff, but not hearing, like, overcome challenge, something that, that set them back, you know, it's always, you know, I just think, I take that as a positive that, you know, you know, whether it's something that, you know, took time to, to figure out and, you know, work around or, you know, I don't know. I, I see that as kind of a good thing, just kind of reassuring that, you know, that, that person is able to handle those kind of situations. And so-
Are you interested in using this kind of format to try it out, or? I mean, the thought was, you know, our principals all do a lot of work together. So, it's nice if they are kind of using the same template. So, like, the challenges, I think, is a great thing. So, they have that on the report, and they're all thinking about that when they come together. 'Cause that's probably the one thing they do talk about the mu, the most when they're together are what kind of challenges they're having. I mean, I know particularly in Corey Valley, when high school principals are getting together, that's what they're doing. They're brainstorming how to help one another with whatever those issues are. And the same with, you know, primary school principals. So, it would, it, it just seems like if they all feel like we're kind of looking at their information in the same, the same way. So. Okay?
I'm fine with it if the, if the principals are happy, you know, with it too.
It seems very efficient. I like it.
Okay. So, I will ask Chris just to add the challenge part on there. And the challenge could be one that you're working on, or one that you've overcome. You kind of put that-
Yeah, challenges slash resources requested, or, you know, resource requests or something. Just to let them know that we, you know, wanna hear.
Well, the resource request should be coming at budget time. We don't wanna hear that year.
Well, yeah. But sometimes, you know-
No, I know. Just kidding. Okay. So, we'll, I'll share that back with him and have him share that out with the principals. So, all right. Oh, new business, the administrative report, and that was the wellness report that Bill put in. So, going forward, particularly for at least the first couple of months, we're probably just going to receive maybe something like this from Bill. Maybe November, he comes and gives us a little more of a static report about how things are going. Yeah. So, people kinda saw, it talks about, does it talk about in here where students are coming from? Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, they're gonna need a little time to acclimate and kind of figure everything out. But I think there's a lot of work going on over there. He's over there. I mean, they're moving stuff over there. I think even some stuff from central office may be going over there to help, you know, set up that space also. So. And then, if you want, I mean, this is certainly something, as you have, you know, member district meetings, you can include this in your pockets from Bill, that we've all received this, if you wanna send, share this out with other, with your board members also. I mean, yeah, it's a GRC SU initiative, but it's students from member districts. And before we go into policy, Eric, do you wanna start with your handout?
Yeah. All right. So, we had the VSBA finish their policy service. And we'll start with the required policies. And, and this is just kind of an overview, or just informational, so that the board can see what the policy service has done, and what the committee will most likely be working on. And, and, so, yeah, it's, it's all in here. Very good stuff. You know, you know, my first thought was there was, there was a lot of things that didn't occur when we were working on them. And some of these policies that are in here even go back to like last year too. So, I will note that there are a couple of policies that are on this agenda that were, actually, they were, I think it was D four. Oh, no, not D four. It was, I think, the recommended policies. So, like, F twenty-seven was one of them. It's a first read policy. It was just, they, they flagged it as like, like a typo. So-
As a what?
A typo.
So, you made the correction.
So, I just made the correction in it. And the other one was the F seven. It was just cross-references.
Oh, yeah.
So, I added the cross-references. And so, the rest of the policies that are in both these memos need further discussion at the committee level. So, so that's pretty much, did anyone have any questions about these?
I just wanna say nicely done. Nicely done. This is such tough work, 'cause policies are so fluid because of, you're never done. 'Cause everything is changing so quickly. But this was just, really, this was nicely done.
Well, I will say that the, the recommended policy report, that, there's a lot of recommended policies in here to consider.
Yeah.
You know, and what's gonna happen is the next step is, at our next policy committee meeting, the VSBA, Carr's Chairman and Senator Cameron are gonna come to the committee meeting and talk about this. And then, we'll basically just go through and, and then, so, you know, if, you know, I would say that if, if anyone in particular had, you know, going through some of these recommended policies in particular that, you know, well, I, actually, I'm getting ahead of myself. You know, if the board, you know, has, has any particular policies that they would, you know, definitely like to see. But, you know, it's most likely gonna be a bigger discussion at the committee level.
Yeah. I, I was impressed by the work the VSBA did. I wasn't sure in the beginning. You're never really sure what the project is gonna be that they turn out. And I don't wanna be negative, but sometimes we've seen not such great things. So, I, I thought that this was really thorough. And it's great to know they sent this before they come to the policy meeting too. So, you have like this foundational work to, to read through before they come and just kind of start talking to you about policies. I think it's helpful.
I was really impressed, you know, just by, you know, some of the policies that they had, where it says differs from VSBA policy. They, the reason why they put it in there, and, you know, some of these I'm reading, and, and it, you know, talks about, you know, like the AOE's requirements. I'm just like, oh, there's like a whole nother perspective.
Right. And some of the ones we have, they say we don't need to have. I mean, so, I mean, some of that, I think, you know, I think there is probably a bigger discussion about some of that, why, you know, but it, it, it's good. It's, it's a lot to process too. It's, it's, for me, it was reading the memo more than wanting to and making some notes.
There's a lot here.
Yeah.
Just when I thought we were-
Eric thought he was gonna like wind this down in September and go on. And then mom comes and says, oh, you're not quite done.
Yeah, I asked for it. All right, I asked for it. So, H four. Sorry, it took me a while to jog my memory. But that is correct. It is being recommended to rescind because of E eleven. So-
That's what I was just gonna look up, what the other reason was.
The E eleven and the E ten are those two new required policies that needed to be hastily adopted. And E eleven covers access control. And because of, because it's required and, and because of the state requirements, it, it covers access control. And so, kind of, H four, and the policy committee talked about this, you know, and, and the committee, you know. So, all, all this is, basically, all this here is recommended by the, the policy committee. So, we did talk about it. And, and I just had forgotten why.
So, we can move these policies forward as a first read without, and we move H four? Was that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if that's what everyone agrees.
Right, right, right. I'm just making sure that we're-
Yeah. So, the, the idea is, is tonight, we're gonna adopt E ten and E eleven, and-
F seven.
As long as, and I'm pretty sure it, it may not have been, I don't know if, if it was warned to be rescinded. It would have to be warned to be rescinded, but we can do that.
As a first read rescind, or whatever you wanna call it, or make a motion to rescind it.
Well, the other one that's on here to rescind is actually on the agenda to rescind. So-
That's why I was trying to change it. But we could just make a motion to move it to next meeting to as it rescind.
Yeah. I think that's probably the cleanest thing to do.
I would be happy to make that motion.
Okay.
Well, I just, I can just check to see if, if it was-
Well, I mean, it does say it on here, but it doesn't say it on the agenda is the problem.
Gotcha. Okay.
So, if, um, if I find something else to write on here. I'm gonna have notes everywhere. This is, this is why the minutes are down.
Luckily, it's on pay TV, so you're good.
Okay. So, Tina's gonna make a motion to rescind, or to, to, no, to move H four to the September agenda for rescinding. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. So, for first read, we have A one, role in adoption of school board policies. F twenty-seven, communicable disease mitigation measures for students and staff. G twelve, proficiency-based graduation requirements. G fourteen, class size policy. And that is all for first reads. So, a motion would be in order to move, to approve and move the first reads on. Any discussion?
I found one little typo on page one. On the second page, where it says teachers' responsibilities, it should be S apostrophe, not apostrophe S.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? So, with that grammatical correction, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Second read policies, we have D ten, renewal of personnel. D eleven, public complaints about personnel. E ten, fire and emergency preparedness drills. E eleven, access control and visitor management. F seven, student athletics, clubs and activities. A motion would be in order to approve the second reads as presented. Motion by Eric. Discussion.
I had a discussion about E eleven.
Can I find on, can I just find it before we discuss?
It's a short one, but I, I just, I had some questions on it.
Was there a discussion in policy about E eleven?
I don't think so, but my discussion comes from my experience this summer after, after the first read. And we didn't meet in policy. And there wasn't really an opportunity to discuss it. So, that's where my question is coming from. So, this policy says all school site and district office exterior doors are locked during the school day. So, what about summer?
What about summer?
It's not a school day if there's not school in session. However, the school is being, some of the schools are being used for summer program. So, what is our responsibility, like, this, I'm not sure this spells out what happens then. And the reason I bring this up is because the door is often propped open at Rutland Town, because they are going in and out of the cafeteria, which doesn't have one of the slack, the locks. And it's making it easy for the kids and parents to come in and drop off and leave just from that one door. But then, it's propped open. But are they really in violation of this policy? Because it's not a school day. So it's very confusing. I'm not sure if maybe this does need more clarification, or...
Well, what happens when you have summer programs there that we as, um, the districts are not responsible? So let's just say, let's say Tapestry or Boys and Girls Club comes back, right? Because Tapestry was technically using our facilities. We weren't running the programming. So they are, they have their own policies and manner in which they're running.
Using our school, so that's why, I don't, I'm, and our kids are accessing it, so.
I don't think it applies.
I don't think it applies either, but do we want it to apply, is, I think is the question that...
Well, then it's a building use issue.
Right.
Well, I think, I think, uh, administrative responsibilities, it says the superintendent or designee will develop procedures to ensure. So that right there, in those procedures to ensure the prin- or the superintendent in these procedures can say that no door during summer school or any time students are in the building, so I think it's well covered, and...
It just says dur- number two though, it says during the school day.
Yeah, but, uh, I, you know...
So I don't know if maybe it should say when children are in the building, or something like that instead. I'm, I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah, but that, that, then how does that work when we have a game? Because children are in the building, right, so the doors aren't gonna be locked because people are coming and going. It's a free flow of...
Summer school, you know, could still be considered a school day, I don't know. I, I think, I think, uh, between, um, this, this policy being written and, you know, it's a model pol- VSBA model policy, um, I think people a lot more well-versed in policy, writing this and, and going over it have thought of these situations.
Well, it says access control procedures are established to address the design, administration, and management of access control. So that's the superintendent or your building administrator that should be doing that. So that, that's already, like Eric said, laid out in policy for that to be happening. I know at Proctor High School, the doors are locked once their students arrive, and they're unlocked when it's time for them to leave, so that they have access for people.
So if so, so basically it's only really when school is in session that this policy...
Yeah, I, I would think summer is also because, look at this when we walked around this building. There's a million projects going on, even though we're holding summer school or tap- or, um, academy or whatever you wanna hear. I mean, during the summer, it's a little bit of an anomaly, I think, so it, it's not even... I, I, I don't know, I, I just...
If we're having summer programming that our school is, is doing, so say we have ESY at Rutland Town, or summer school for three weeks, and that is our school session, right? It's a school day, even though it's an abbreviated day, maybe three hours, but if, um, if they're leaving the door open because of their programming, it's still a, a door to the school.
Right, but that's an issue for your building administrator to be, um, in my opinion, when you read this, for your building administrator to be speaking to whoever the supervisor or...
So it should be covered. It, it's, it, it is covering it, is what you're saying, okay.
I, I mean, I, I, I think policies are for us to set the, you know, the guidelines, and to get into the meat of it is the administrator and the superintendent to set how, how, how you're going to go forward.
I can see why you said that, but I, I think you're right about that.
That it says enough.
Up to, if there's a problem, then the administrator needs to go back to the policy and say, that door should be locked.
Yeah.
You know, so, because that's the policy, and it's their responsibility to know the policy.
Might, and you probably have a lot of little bunnies in your school now.
Probably, especially since it's open to the cafeteria, and there's a lot of kids in there.
Yeah, I mean...
Sticky fingers.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But that's nicely done.
All right, any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving second reads as presented?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have no general public here.
Uh, F8 to rescind to...
Oh, okay, yep, hold on. Uh, motion would be in order to rescind, um, F8, interscholastic sports. Tina makes a motion to rescind F8. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, our, our public left to go eat. Uh, the next meeting is September 5th, and, um, I, I do believe it'll be in the new location. If it's not, certainly an email will go out, letting you know that it's not going to be there. Agenda topics could be sent to myself or Chris?
Really, really quickly...
Sure, or you have something?
With the public comment of today and the cell phone use in school policy, is that something we wanna talk about at our next SU meeting, or is that something that the, the policy committee should work on, like?
Um, can I just like, give Chris an update and see what he wants, see if he wants to, um, put that on the September? We could put it on the September, uh, uh, agenda anyway, and discuss it and decide what we wanna do with it. Let's, let's just do that.
Okay, I think that'd be, that'd be fine, because, um, you know, the, the board sets the policy, so I think if, if the full SU board is like, yes.
I'll just put, uh, prospective, um, social media phone-free policy?
Cell phone use in school policy.
Okay.
I know it was, it was a well-in-depth, um, presentation, but I think it just all comes down to cell phone usage in school.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just put that on under new business, okay?
Yep.
And we can decide, um, at that meeting, what you wanna do, or you'd like to send it.
And will we be starting budget talks next meeting?
Uh, I'm gonna guess probably not.
I think Louis usually, um, does his timeline first and gives you the overview of when things will come.
I feel like he did that in August last year.
Um, I think we did do it early last year, and he wasn't a big fan of that. He thought it was too early because he didn't have, um, numbers for a lot of things, so. But, um, yeah, we can touch base with him. All right, um, so if there's nothing else, we do require an executive session for personnel. So, um, a motion would be in order to move into executive session, let's say at, um, 7:45. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?